Good evening, welcome to a special City Commission meeting on May 20th. I'm calling the meeting to order, if we could all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Kimpenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Conley? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Reynolds? Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Coine?
Here. A motion to excuse the absence of the three Commissioners missing would be in order. Commissioner Baldini? I'll sub move it. Second, Campana? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, okay. Because this is a special meeting with one topic, there are no agenda additions. We need a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Commissioner Kimpenzie?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no, that motion passes. Announcements? There are no announcements. Now is the time for public comment. If you wish to speak, please come forward to this microphone here. State your name, address, and city or township of residence. If you wish to reserve time to speak on the agenda item, please say so, and we'll put your name down. So, anyone wishing to speak, you have a three-minute time limit.
Hello, my name is Robert, at 1702 Gray Street, and I'd like to address the agenda and when it comes on, comes up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Barry Poleson, 413 North Front. I'm with, here with the Landing Development Group, and I'm here to answer any questions that may come up during the discussion time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up and speak or reserve time? Okey doke, I will close the public comment section. The next is a consent agenda item on the agenda. Would a motion be forthcoming to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Kimpenzie, second that? All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no, okay, that passes. Now, new business. We have new business, the proposed Founder's Landing amended development reimbursement agreement. Madam Clerk, could you read the report and recommendation from the City Manager? I just passed out to the Commission this, and I'm not sure, let me, could you pass that down to her?
That hasn't made it to me.
Pardon me?
Do you have that?
Well, it's in, it's in the thing, but you, we'll just, you can read this, which we just passed down to you. Could someone give this to her? Thank you. Could you read it?
Okay.
Thanks.
Starting with the background, sir?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. On May 12th, 2015, a joint City Commission Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority work session was conducted to discuss a proposed Founder's Landing amended development and reimbursement agreement. The meeting was requested by the Market Development Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to seek City endorsement of their recommendation to amend the current agreement, which was agreed to by all parties on September 10th, 2010. The work session materials, including the proposed amendment and Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommendation, are attached as appendices to this document. The City Commission expressed consensus for scheduling a special meeting within one week from the time of the work session to consider the Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommendation, and they requested, in addition to the work session materials, that the City Manager forward pros and cons associated with the language proposed, and to coordinate those views with the City Attorney. The attached documentation includes the Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority materials provided for the work session, and the pros and cons, including background materials. Fiscal effect, the variety of impacts may, a variety of impacts may result from deliberative conclusions. Recommendation, consider the Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommendation, and motion to either approve the agreement as offered, disapprove the agreement as offered, approve the agreement with changes that address administrative concerns specifically, City would no longer be party to the agreement upon completion, complete payment and reimbursement of all public debt, or should the City remain party to the agreement, require all project costs for which the public debt is issued to first retain priority irrespective of when undertaken, and include City long-term maintenance payments for the seawall and boardwalk improvements, or otherwise disallow all long-term maintenance provisos for any party to the agreement, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you very much for reading that. Now, we have two people who wish to speak, and we also have a presentation. Let the record show that Commissioner Frazier arrived shortly after the beginning of the meeting. Welcome. Thank you. So, we also have a presentation from Mac, who is going to talk about the brownfield. So, former Mayor Neamy, would you like to come forward and speak?
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, my name is Robert Neamy, I live at 1702 Gray Street in the city Marquette. First of all, I'd like to applaud the Commission, the city staff, the Brownfield Authority and Land Development Group on moving this project forward. It's been a long time in the making. We've been fortunate with the success of the Founder's Landing project so far. The condos have developed probably much ahead of what we expected. I remember in 2009, when we were first looking at the agreement, the, got some of the schedules, and I had concerns about how quickly they would build out whether the tax increment financing would be available. Fortunately, it has been, the Hampton Inn has developed, and we're now nearing the final phase of the project with the mixed-use developments. I do have a couple of concerns about the proposed agreement. As I said, I'm glad to see that we're moving forward, and I hope we continue to move forward with this project, but the issue of whether the City should remain a party to the agreement or the project, I guess in my view, I think this is a, it's a big project, $35 million in tax captured revenue. I think the, you know, the primary governmental function of the City is to be accountable to taxpayers, so I think there should be a City role, and a continuing City role in the project. Regarding the parking deck, I'm glad to see that the developer is taking responsibility. When we first looked at this, I voted against the project, because I was concerned about the long-term effects on the City of having to maintain and manage the parking deck. And at the time, I'm not sure that we saw, or I saw the need for a parking deck with this project, but I think if that's what the developers think that they need, and the Brownfield Authority agrees, certainly I would support that. But the issue of using the public finance, the TIF money, to maintain the deck in the future, I guess I disagree with that. I think we're putting a lot of public money in developing the deck, I think that's important if we want the project to move forward, but I guess I just don't agree with the maintenance fund as such. But finally, as I said, I do want to see this move forward. I commend the City Commission for doing this, having the special meeting, and I would hope that perhaps you could look at some of the concerns, and if you don't approve it tonight, if there's a revised agreement in the very near future, come back in a special meeting or regular meeting and move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your coming, because you have had a long involvement in this, and appreciate your remarks. I'm going to ask Mr. McClellan to come up, and you have a PowerPoint to present. Appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mac McClellan, the Brownfield Authority Consultant, and at the special meeting, there was a request to provide kind of an outline of a little bit of the background and structure of the Founder's Landing Brownfield project, and so I have two of us now provided the handouts on the desk as well, and then some comments addressing the City Administration concerns as well, and some proposed revisions to the agreement based on those concerns as well. So, really, the reason and the purpose of the amendment that we have here is to really transfer the responsibility of multi-level parking on the Founder's Landing project from the City to the Landing Development Group, made possible by some changes in the Act a couple of years ago, but really is the primary purpose of that amendment. There's other pieces to that to make that happen, but it's really what the amendment does, is its primary purpose. I'm going to go back a little bit and talk about what Brownfield tax increment financing is, for a bit of background. The Brownfield financing is very unique, because it generates its own dollars to be able to pay off some extraordinary costs. When we approved the Brownfield plan in 2009, the base year and the initial taxable value was set, and actually, for the Founder's Landing, it was zero, because it was public property. So, that taxable value was set at zero. The investment is made in the property taxes increase over that time, and they've increased substantially on this project, has been $18 million worth of investment, and the taxes went from zero to about $420,000 per year in its current developed state. The developer pays the taxes based on new assessments. It's not an abatement, the developer, the private parties all pay their taxes based on their taxable value, as developed by the assessor, against the millage rate, and then those taxes are paid. What happens in this case is, some of those increased taxes in the early years, in this case, quite a few years, are captured by the Brownfield Authority and paid back for those eligible activity costs, for those specific Brownfield items to address the issues on the site of environmental, site preparation issues, sun-stable soils, and a great opportunity to be able to provide support for public infrastructure on the projects as well. As I mentioned, the advantages, I think, of the Brownfield projects is the revenues to pay for these extraordinary development costs are generated by the new investments. There's not an outlay of existing public funds for the projects, and then waiting to get reimbursed, there are opportunities to be paid back by that private investment. And really, without this Brownfield private financing, without the ability to pay for some of those extraordinary costs, the project would not proceed. We wouldn't be able to get these dollars without these, without these kind of investments. A great part about it is, public infrastructure costs can also be paid through tax increment financing, through this Brownfield tax increment financing, so it's a great way to gain public assets through private investment and recapture of those taxes. And the other great part about it is that the City taxes are leveraged with local and state taxes three to one. Just as a quick note here, sort of the tax capture allocation, the City represents about 30% of the total tax bill, and the rest, 70%, about, a little more, less than 50% is state taxes, and the balance are other local taxes. So, we're able to capture all of these taxes to be able to invest in these projects as well, so the City dollars, City tax dollars are leveraged in a three-to-one allocation. Just a little bit of background on the Founder's Landing project, the City acquired Founder's Landing property in June of 2002 from the Canadian National Railroad for $2.1 million, a very thoughtful and forward-thinking approach to redevelop a pretty challenging site and to move it forward. They secured DEQ funding, the City secured DEQ funding for environmental remediation, and a lot of state and federal funds for the infrastructure improvements. They constructed those infrastructure improvements at about a cost of $11 million, and then marketed three different parcels, or the approach was to market three different parcels for private redevelopment. The City had issued a RFP in 2008 for parcel one, which is currently the residential partial portion on the western edge of the property, selected the Landing Development Group for residential condominiums, and the purchase was completed in September of 2008 for $1 million. The City issued a RFP for parcel three, which is down on the waterfront, in late 2008, and selected Landing Development Group Two, essentially the same individuals with a new LLC. Was added, the proposal included the requirement for multi-level parking. In order to achieve the kind of densities that were necessary, they had to provide parking on that site. It was impossible to have, to meet the needs of the site with surface parking in that location, or no parking, there were requirements really necessary for that multi-level parking to be part of the development. The City and Landing Development Group entered into a purchase agreement, which included provisions for Brownfield Plan and Brownfield TIF, and the property was purchased in 2009 for $1.5 million. At that time, or a little bit before that, there was a Brownfield Plan that was approved in March of 2009. It only included parcel one, and was only for the state Michigan business tax credit. There was a Brownfield tax credit that was available at that time. The amended plan included parcel three, and also added significant public improvements, including the public parking facility. So, just to give you an idea of the allocations between private eligible activities for reimbursement and public eligible activities, the private eligible activities were related to the environmental issues, the construction of special foundations to meet the soil conditions on the property, and stormwater, addressing stormwater management. The parking deck that we're talking about here, now, this is the allocation which has shifted from the City responsibility now to the private sector responsibility, and the balance of the costs were for other public improvements, including the seawall, Berega Street, Marina, and currently, there's some unallocated dollars in the total overall budget because some things had changed from the original plan. So, predominant portion of the investment was for public infrastructure improvements. The Development and Reimbursement Agreement was originally executed in 2009, it was part of the Brownfield Plan as well, and basically outlined the arrangements between the developers at the Brownfield Authority and the City for development and reimbursement of the project. Parcel 3A was sold to the Larsons for the Hampton Inn redevelopment, and the agreement was amended to add the hotel developers, because they also had some of those eligible activities in September of 2009, 2010, excuse me. The City still had the responsibility to finance, finance and develop the public parking deck consistent with the Brownfield Plan. For the current development that's happening, as I mentioned, there's residential condominiums that have been built on parcel one with about $10 million of private investment. The Hampton Inn was built on parcel 3B with about $8 million of private investment, and again, about over $420,000 worth of increased property taxes on the site. The City issued bonds for the seawall boardwalk, and the Brownfield Authority issued bonds for environmental remediation and site preparation, and the annual bond payments for those are For the City parking developments, again, the mixed-use commercial, the density of development on parcel 3B really requires multi-level integrated parking. There's not enough space to build a separate parking deck, it really has to be integrated within that building in order to meet the space requirements and provide enough building on that site to be economically feasible. We began discussions in 2012 to try and work out the arrangement for public financing in that, in that development, but you can just imagine, with a public facility that's constructed below a private facility, there's a lot of complexities and a lot of challenges to coming up to agreement with that. And after a significant effort, we were unable to come to an agreement for that. About that same time, interestingly, Act 3D1, the governing act that, for Michigan's Brownfield program, was amended to include private underground multi-level parking as an eligible activity. Prior to that, and that's the reason that it was a public facility, that's the only way that we could get it qualified for Brownfield TIF, was that it was a public facility. With this amendment, it really opened a new opportunity, a new door for the project to proceed. Landing Development Group started exploring that private financing in the fall of 2014, and came to the Brownfield Authority and the City in October in 2014, and said, hey, we'd like to pursue this opportunity, what do you all think about it? I think everybody was excited about leaving the City and the Brownfield Authority of that responsibility, depending on the conditions that would happen. The private parking facility will be privately owned, operated, and maintained. It includes up to, it includes 30 parking spaces at all times, public parking spaces, and also 100, about 100 parking spaces that will be available on evenings and weekends. Most of the activity at the site will be happening during the week from eight to five, so there's 100 additional spaces that are available for the community on evenings and weekends for this. Working with the financial institutions that were going to finance the deck, the LDG proposed amendments to the Development and Reimbursement Agreement in March 2015. When we reviewed this, we saw a number of advantages to the City and the Brownfield Authority. First of all, the risk to the City and the Brownfield Authority for financing and assuring the adequate revenues to make sure that those bond payments is essentially eliminated. All that risk goes on to the developers now to ensure that that revenue is available. Any potential responsibility, because it still would be a public facility, and if something happened, there might be a situation where the public would have to take, public sector would have to take over responsibility for operations, that is also eliminated. And any construction oversight responsibility, because we have a public parking deck below a building, is also eliminated. All of those responsibilities and risks now fall on the developer. So, we thought that this was a very good arrangement and a good situation with significant advantages. Again, this amendment shifts the responsibility for parking, the parking facility from the City to LDG. It includes that the hotel developers will be removed from the agreement. Their redevelopment, their eligible activities are essentially complete, they're owed about $95,000, and as I mentioned, there's about $320,000 annually available to pay off those eligible activity expenses. They'll be paid off this fall, and it does include in the agreement that they'd be removing the agreement only if we receive a notarized letter from the developers that said they've been satisfied with the, with the situation, that they'll be paid off, and all the conditions are there. So, this has that proviso, that the hotel developers must agree to being removed from the agreement. And it also amends the TIF revenue cascade. As you can imagine, there's people lined up for the dollars that are generated by the project, and one of the issues for the bank was, in order to finance this and be assured of those revenues, they needed to have a position in how that money flows down for the, for the eligible, for the eligible activities to individuals. And so, what we ended up with is, currently, the existing bonds for the seawall and boardwalk, and for the recovery zone facility bond that the Brownfield Authority issued for environmental remediation and site preparation, those are still in first position, those will have the first availability to that. The Brownfield Authority administrative costs are in second position, there has been a cap that's included on those, but it's well below the current allocations for the Brownfield Authority. And the bank asked essentially to say, for this private facility debt that we would incur, that we need to be in that, in that third position that's available. We'll talk about this a little bit, but future bond issues are currently proposed in the agreement to be in fourth position. The long-term capital reserve fund is in fifth position, and then the balance, the local site remediation fund and out-of-pocket expenses. So, the two changes essentially to the agreement are with the private facility debt being included in there, and the long-term capital reserve fund being included as well. I'll talk a little bit about those in a moment. Some of the key issues that have been identified by City Staff was, first of all, the City as a party to the agreement, and the City has issued, and will issue full faith and credit on the, on the projects, and really, as party to the agreement, can help protect those interests. If the City was out of the agreement, the Brownfield Authority would need some assurance that full faith and credit would be available in the future for that, and so we've suggested an amended provision that the City would be removed from the agreement upon the bond retirement, upon all bond retirements. So, at the point in time when the public debt is paid off, then the City would be removed. I believe that was the recommendation that the City Manager had made. The second issue was the future bond position, and a little bit concerned about that. Of course, the bank has requested or required a strong position for its debt, it wants to make certain that nobody can jump ahead of that. The City needs a strong position for its future bond obligations in that case. And so, the kind of compromise that we came up with in proposal was to move those future bond issues up to that fourth position behind the public parking deck, and there's a provision in the agreement that in order to issue the next bonds, all the parties, the Landing Development Group, the City, and the Brownfield Authority, all have to agree that there's going to be adequate revenues to pay off those bonds. The Landing Development Group can waive those rights, so even if there's not enough for them to be reimbursed for their costs, we move up and we calculate whether, so there's a financial analysis that's conducted before the next bond is, bonds are issued. It has been raised as an issue that if the public bonds are behind the Brownfield Authority and the parking debt, that they may be a challenge to issue. And the next bond issue would likely be the Berega Street improvement that would go, that would be part of, that would be necessary for the Phase Two development of the project. And we've disclosed that, identified that as an issue, and if we get down that road and we work through the financial consultants and bond counselors, identified that we cannot issue those bonds unless we're in first position, we can come back and amend the, amend the agreement to move those bonds up to that first position, because that, that particular project is necessary and a benefit for the Phase Two of the development, and so that should be an agreed-upon point, if that becomes the concern for the bond issues at that time. We don't have any outstanding bond issues or any bond issues that are anticipated before the Berega Street extension. The final issue was the long-term capital fund, and the bank has said, and we also understand, and when the City was looking at this as a, as a project, we identified that long-term capital was going to be a problem, and so developed a technique and a method to utilize Brownfield TIF for long-term capital. The amount that's, that's requested, about $455,000, is relatively small compared to the type of participation, five and a half million for the facility cost, environmental costs, and special foundations, and believe that that was a reasonable and necessary cost. One great advantage to this is that the Brownfield Authority controls the funds, any request for these long-term capitals must come to the Brownfield Authority, be justified, and then the Brownfield Authority can release those funds. And so, but the question was raised, that there also is public improvements that have been made on these projects, the seawall boardwalk, and the Berega Street extension, any of the pier redevelopment that might happen as part of future development, and so we've suggested a provision be added to the agreement that the Brownfield Authority approved, that adds a public long-term capital fund in an equal amount, about $455,000. So, in summary, the revisions from the Brownfield Authority approval was, one, that the City would be removed from the agreement upon the retirement of the bonds, two, that future bond issues are in fourth position in the cascade, but also understanding that bond buyers may need a stronger position, and that may need to be moved up at that time when those bond issues are there, and that a long-term capital reserve fund would have, would add $455,000 to address the long-term capital needs for the public improvements. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. As usual, very clear, helpful explanation. I have a first question. The revisions, as you just presented in the last slide, they have, how were they arrived at? Did you just make them up, or have you had discussions with the developers, and the City Attorney, and the City Manager?
I usually dream these kind of things up.
That's what I figured.
No, those, those were identified, e in the conversations, as we began to look at the, at the agreement. You know, we've had conversations, Bill spoke with the City Attorneys, I was able to speak with the City Attorneys to sort of address those issues, or identify what those issues were. We've proposed some conversations, as soon as I got off the phone with, with Ron and Suzanne, called the developers, said that these are the issues that have been identified, talked through those, answered a couple of questions, and LDG is satisfied with those, with those changes, once they see the final language, but they're satisfied with those arrangements. So, they were in attempt to address issues that have been identified by the City Manager and City Attorney, and we haven't addressed this, but one thing I should add is that with these revisions, I think Ron and Suzanne have opined that it'd be most effective for the Brownfield Authority to go back and ratify these changes to the agreement. We had a flexible motion there, but would be back, so we're trying to schedule a special meeting for the Brownfield Authority, to do that if we move forward.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that, because that was kind of what we hoped would come out of the work session that we had last week, so appreciate your remarks. Fellow Commissioners, hearing that, what, and seeing the recommendations, and particularly with the revisions that were described, would you like to, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Sir, just in order to help kind of expedite things, let me confirm that everything that Mac has just described in those revision slides materially meet everything that we had asked for as part of the White Paper that you'd requested, so we wouldn't have any further comment, we'd be fine with accepting the recommendations as proposed by the Brownfield Consultants, as copied out as they were, you know, based on the speculative nature of the future. We gave you some pretty extensive background material to prepare for this. There are other issues that we raised that would probably be more appropriate to take on as an inter-local discussion between the Brownfield and the City Administration, so we'd like another shot at being able to chat about that with the Brownfield Authority, but not tonight. So, from that perspective, I'm, I'm happy to say we would welcome the chance to support the Brownfield's revised recommendations as presented by Mac.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
And I likewise would support Bill, but there was one thing that Mac didn't get in his revised terminology regarding the parking deck, long-term capital reserve fund. There's a word that talks about the amount that is set aside each year, and it's up to and not of, of $30,000. to and not of, of $32,500, but up to. And so that needs to be a part of this motion. Those two words are important.
All right. Thank you. Stay tuned for helping us make that motion.
Yeah, I will.
As Mr. Vida said, he provided a white paper. It was more like a white book. It was 258 pages, which we got last night, and that's a lot to read. Now, we have a couple of choices here. We could entertain a motion to dispense with the rules and have a discussion, or here, based on what we've heard from Mac and the city attorneys and the city manager, to go ahead and make a motion in terms of time. And I'm willing to entertain either.
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion and discuss it, because if we have our legal counsel...
You go, you go ahead if you wish.
And I would ask then for some guidance from our attorney to change the words. So I would move that the city be removed from the agreement upon retirement of the bonds. I would further move that future public bond issues, that they be moved, that the TIF cascade be moved to the fourth position, understanding the bond buyers may need a stronger position, and that the long-term capital reserve fund includes $455,000 for public improvement. And then I, I would like legal counsel to provide the one terminology he suggested.
Yeah. Can I, before he does that, you need to include in your motion to approve the agreement with these amendments that you made.
Yes.
Okay. So could you, City Attorney, say what you just said about the limits?
Yes, yes, Your Honor, and it's found in Article 2.4E, and this article deals with Brownfield tax increment revenues that are used to fund the parking deck long-term capital reserve fund. This is part of the change that you've motioned to approve, and that's where the public improvement capital reserve fund will also be included. And in Mac's document, he says that that, that deposit into this fund shall begin five years after completion of the first phase of the parking deck and shall continue annually in an amount of $32,500 for each fund until it is fully funded. It needs to say shall continue annually in an amount up to $32,500 for each fund until it is fully funded. Correct, Mac?
Okay. Madam Plurk, do you have that included in Commissioner Baldini's motion? Thank you, Commissioner Baldini. Is there a support to that motion? Commissioner Campana?
Support for that.
Okay. Moving on to discussion. Commissioner Baldini, any comments?
I think we're at a point this evening, I think we all came here because we weren't sure if there was, where our city administration was and where our legal counsel was on this agreement. Mac did a good job of presenting it succinctly, and as we heard from our city manager saying that he was in agreement with this, and along with our attorney with the, with the little proviso. So I think we probably have an agreement, starting with last year's, last week's discussion, requesting that we expedite this and...
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
We all want this to go forward. I think everybody here wants to go forward. The question was, you know, what is the city's role in this? And it appears that we've kind of made a decision now that both sides are happy with this, and if the city's included, it'll work. So I think we've arrived at a conclusion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Kenvenzi?
Can I just ask staff, the long-term capital reserve fund amount, how did you come up with the $455,000?
Why don't you come right there?
Yeah, that was provided by a consultant, a parking consultant that talked about the generalized cost. I believe it's about $90 per space per year, and so calculated over that timeframe is a reasonable cost. We checked it with our parking consultant as well, and that's a very reasonable cost. So that's how that total came up for the, and just basically used an equivalent amount for the public improvements for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Frazier, any questions, comments? Well, I'm going to call for the question then. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously, five to zero. We'll move on to comments from the commission. Mr. Frazier, have any comments?
Not really. Happy to see your project moving forward. I think if anybody has any further questions, contact the Brownfield Authority. You know, you guys are the experts in it, and I think the city manager, the attorney is happy with all this, so I'm happy with it. Glad to see winter's over for this week at least, and look forward to next week. Have a happy holidays.
Thank you. The city attorney is pointing his finger at me. Did I forget something?
You didn't do anything wrong, Your Honor, but Commissioner Frazier was excused at the beginning of this meeting, and I think it's, the record should show that he showed up shortly after that vote was taken and has been present throughout this presentation, and of course, obviously voted tonight. So I just want, I think the record needs to show that.
All right. I'll excuse you then, okay? All right, thank you. Commissioner Campana?
I came here today with about, expecting a two-hour debate. I had about 20 questions, but you know what? They're all answered before I even asked them. I think that the Brownfield did an extreme amount of work on this. I know they have. Mac guided them. He knows what he's talking about. The city manager was watching out for the city. I'm glad that we reached an easy agreement. I think this is what everybody wants, and we hope that this project gets started soon and completed soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm glad to see that we will be out of it at some point. Not that I just want to wash our hands, but I think that's probably the best way for us to proceed. The city, I mean, there's quite a history here of the city saying, this is property we want, purchased it, hired people to help develop it, and to keep it moving forward. And I think it's appropriate. I'm glad to see that we've got some consensus, and I think the meeting last week was very helpful. I want to thank the city administration for putting the time and investing it and providing us with voluminous quantities of paper, but it was needed. It was important to have done, and our attorneys and Mac and the city came to some agreement. And I think that's important. I have one other comment, though. This weekend is Memorial Weekend, and just a reminder that on Monday, which is Memorial Day, the city and the American Legion, there's a ceremony at Holy Cross Cemetery at 9:30, followed by one then at the Park Cemetery at 10:15, and then the American Legion has coffee and rolls after. It's, it's a very appropriate ceremony at both places, and just a reminder, if you have the opportunity, please try to attend.
Thank you. I have a couple of thoughts. I'll resort to geezer-hood here. I was on the city commission in 1984 when the idea of purchasing this land from the railroad existed, or began. And it was, if you think this was hard, it was really hard, because they kept changing owners of the railroad. One day, one person, you know, or one company would own it, and then they, another one, and they, you know, you'd trace them down. So it took literally 25 years to nail down a railroad to sell us this. And to put things in perspective, in our 258-page tome included a picture of Founders Landing, and for those of you who remember with the caustic soda tanks, how wonderful that is compared to what, how wonderful this is truly going to be. So my thanks to investors who have a vision and who, and it's a result of a lot of work for over 30 years that this actually is happening. And my, my deep thanks to all parties who worked very hard, compromised, weren't angry, yelling and screaming at each other, and worked out a compromise. I really appreciate that, and we've got some great consultants working with you, so I want to recognize them. And I think this is a success, and it's a result of both, all groups compromising to some extent. So thank you very much. And I know it's been very hard these past couple of years negotiating this, and we were fortunate that the law changed, because I think that was a real game changer for the developer and for the city, frankly. And I'm very, really very excited that this is happening. And I have to also say in closing that everybody, a lot of the press, how is this going to come out? And I honestly, tonight, I came here, I had no idea how I was going to vote or anybody else was going to vote. I wanted to hear what compromise had been worked out, and I'm very satisfied, and I think it was, I appreciate very much all parties doing that, so. And appreciate the commissioner's patience and diligence and responsible action, so appreciate it. And a special thanks to our staff for having really worked extremely hard on looking out for the, what they should do is the city. So thank you, and I think this will be a great project. Mr. Manager, any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Only that I appreciate all of those comments, particularly on behalf of staff. I'd like to thank my colleague and the city attorney and his staff for all of the hard work they've put in, the Brownfield Authority members, the director of the Brownfield Authority who can't be here with us this evening, and of course, the Brownfield consultant, Mac. It's few times I can recall walking into a meeting where some of the things that we're recommending are serendipitously the same thing that the negotiations end up recommending as well. So we're hopeful. We know there might be a few issues coming up in the future. You never really know what the future holds. We know we're going to have to keep our eye on the ball, but we're glad to see this project moving forward, as I'm sure the 15 past sessions of the city commission since the property was acquired might also feel.
Thank you. I've lapsed into geezer-hood again here for a moment. I apologize to Commissioner Kim Benzey, because she does not like to go last, and I was trying to not have her go last, but I forgot her. So my deepest, deepest apologies. I'm really, I'm sorry. So Commissioner Kim Benzey, we're looking anxiously forward to your comments, and I apologize, okay? And she has a meeting that she has to get out of here by 6:15, so this was just super. We never expected that, so thank you. Okay, sorry.
No, I'd just like to thank city staff, Mac, and certainly the developers for doing a little legwork before we got here. I think this was huge. The only comment I have is the future, you know, TIF cascade, I guess, with future bonds. It, it's always hard to know what's, what's going to be out there and who needs a stronger position, you know, going forward. But I realize to get this off the ground right now, we need to move forward, and so I'm happy that we can actually get that done and do that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm getting yelled at from the other end here. You forgot something, Commissioner?
I just want to share an old, I want to share an old Greek proverb that I shared with you, because if you're talking about the future, and it says, "Wise men plant trees whose shades they will never experience." And we're not going to be here when these bonds get paid off. We may be here, but I doubt we'll be on the commission, we'll be term limited. But it's an investment in the future, and, and we are hoping that it will come out the right way, and I think it will. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.